Good morning, everyone. It's nine o'clock, February the 10th, 2025, and our regular commissary support meeting is now in session. Uh, first item on the agenda is roll call by our county clerk, Mary Jane Baviabalon. Mary Jane, good morning.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners.
Good morning.
Judge Rasmel.
Present.
Commissioner Moya.
Present.
Commissioner Morales.
Present.
Commissioner Solis.
Present.
Commissioner Gasa.
Present.
We have a court judge.
Thank you, Mary Jane. Next item is our invocation by Dr. Roger Minner, Commissary's Court Chaplain.
Good morning.
Doctor Minner, good morning.
Well, as I was thinking about what Friday holds, we all know what Friday holds, right? You know, significant others and love. So, uh, my thoughts were moved that way as I opened a prayer today. So, bow your heads with me. Let's pray. Our God, Creator of love, we're reminded that the very first time the word "love" is found in your word, you were speaking to Abraham as he looks upon his son Isaac on the very altar of sacrifice. So, you remind us today, Father, that the very best understanding of love is not found in candies and flowers, but in the willingness to give of ourselves completely to others, an unselfish, self-giving love. For your love for the world cost the life of your son Christ. So, today, we come into your presence in this court to again experience the fullness of your love as we commit ourselves to the benefit of the life of others in this community. May this court, our judge, commissioners, elected and appointed officials come together this day seeking to make decisions which would benefit this community. May they seek to serve and honor others over themselves, and this is your meaning of love. May they respond to your leadership as they evaluate each issue and each situation presented to this court. May they find comfort in the knowledge that they will receive all that they need for the tasks that lie before them this day. Your work reminds us that all we need to do is to ask for your help. May you grant our leaders strength and health in body and mind and spirit for the responsibilities which lie ahead, and may they be assured of your love today. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have an important, uh, commission is communications. I have a lot of things going on here and have car stuff. I don't know if you've seen that hood and that sign that we have welcomes up at the county fair. Special thanks to Raúl Baviabalon for donating that. Also, we got, uh, show horn. We had a rush rack that was not covered, so now we have, uh, we had a company, local company, and several local individuals that help out donating the, the canopy so that the kids can have that shaded area. If it's hot or if it's raining, they can still go in there and take care of their animals. Uh, special thanks to Nupi's, uh, metal buildings. He donated all the material. And then Joe Chig donated the electrical and the lights. And of course, the man made, uh, the works, the fabrication. Very well. Well, I appreciate all those, uh, local companies and individuals for, for helping out.
Thank you for all of them.
I just want to advise, uh, the public, Judge, that we do have a new, uh, fitness, uh, facility that just opened up in our town. It's in precinct three. It's, uh, the intersection of Highway eighty-three and Montevere Lane. Uh, so congratulations to Jaime Gutierrez and his family for opening up this facility. It is, they, I know they do have a, a special rate for first responders, so if you guys are interested, get in, get in contact with them, but, uh, congratulations again to Jaime Gutierrez and his family.
Yes, I've, I've driven by it really nice. There's a lot of upgrades. I haven't been inside because I, I think those dames are behind me. But, uh, outside, they did quite a, quite a lot of work.
They should be. They put in a lot of, a lot of effort in there.
I understand that it's supposed to be like there's a certain discount for county employees.
Employees as well.
As well. Yes, county employees, uh, first responders. Uh, there's several different promotions. I know, I saw a post that there's gonna be a Valentine's special, so they have different specials, you know, contact them and reach out to them and, and, you know, they'll take care of you. Also, Judge, another one, shout out to the first responders. Uh, I've been getting a lot of compliments from the community. There is a lot of presence. Uh, we, I see it, uh, every time I come into town. Uh, that reminds me to slow down a little bit, but, uh, so thank you, Sheriff, for, for the hard work of the community.
As much as we care with what we have.
Yes. Uh, but, well, we, we see it and we've been hearing it. And, and Chief, also, you know, you guys always respond to the calls. You know, you guys take care of business. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Uh, county fair times coming around. I, I, I've got a message, uh, I guess from the president of the county fair that they're trying to host, they're gonna be hosting a bull riding event on the twenty-eighth of, uh, of February.
Yeah, I saw it. Shared it on social media.
Yeah, so, uh, good luck to them. And I had, we had the Queens contest. I think we've got to be forward, so, uh, yeah, appreciate, uh, that takes a lot of effort and, and, uh, a lot of those girls, a lot of bravery, I think, on their part to compete.
Another question, Judge, have, have they, uh, separated the, for the parade to the closure of the highway?
I don't know if that's come before, uh, yet with Tech Todd, uh, Nelly, but have you heard anything?
Reach out to them for next meeting?
I don't know.
One more meeting because it's gonna be.
Who's in charge?
And we'll reach out to them.
It'll be Jaime Guerra?
Yeah, Jaime Guerra.
I know, uh, they already contacted us, so we can go get the bleachers, so.
Of course, uh, we always help setting up everything before the, before the event. So, it's right around the corner. What, what are the days? The actual fair is, uh?
March ninth.
March seventh, eighth, and ninth. So, it's right around the corner. Yeah. Well, the, uh, this, this year, it's, it's a good thing. It's getting bigger. So, we're starting on Tuesday with a heifer show, then the moving of all the other projects on Wednesday, and then judging on Thursday and Friday, and then the sale and sale.
Yeah.
And also, I wanted to put it to the public, to the public's part, uh, we really picked it up pretty nice and having a lot of people show up, which is really nice. I remember it was real, real big back in the day when I was younger and wanna bring it back to the community and enjoy it as well.
And you'll be hosting, uh, what is it, the car show?
Yeah, the car show, I think, April fourth, so it's pretty much finished in, pretty much ready to go.
I think, uh, one, one event commissioner that, uh, that would be good to bring back would be the Fourth of July.
Yeah, I remember that when I was.
That used to be great, you know?
It was awesome.
Great memories on that one. And, and also, it was a little, it was a bittersweet moment because you knew it was back to school, right? You had a few days at half right of summer, so.
I think the public page two was there one time, right? They found a mistake and I'm like, something.
There's no school today, right? Super Bowl, uh, weekend.
It's, it's the weather day, good.
The weather day.
They were bringing barbecue out from, from.
Yeah, it wasn't much of a game. Well, like, people say, uh, we're the experts at defenses win championships, and boy, the Philadelphia Eagles defense came to play.
I think they were hungry.
Yeah, they came to play. Yeah, they showed up. Yeah, it was much of a game, but.
I think we're all barbecued out for the next week, so.
All right. Well, any other communication, commissioners? Now, we move on to public comment. This section provides the public the opportunity to address the Commissioners' Court on any items on the agenda. Any members of the public could address the court. If not, uh, we'll move on to item number six, approval of invoices. In your packets, we had invoices from January the twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five through, uh, February the sixth, twenty-twenty-five, uh, for a total of six hundred and twenty-two thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars and seventeen cents.
Motion to approve is presented.
Motion to approve is presented by Commissioner Solis, seconded by Commissioner Moya. Tell that, uh, general fund, you're still limited funds, one hundred and forty dollars in Spanish. Uh, I, I did notice on the, what was it, airport fuel, is, is that, is there, is that an actual item or is it from the enterprise fund, which one's on that? Seventy-one thousand? I think that was for the work completed on the field farm.
Eighty-three, Judge.
Eighty-three thousand. Because I know they did purchase fuel, Judge.
We did purchase fuel, so.
So, we, we purchased.
But there's a line item for fuel purchase.
For eighty-three thousand?
I like a lot of fuel, I just, I don't know.
I don't know what the amount was, because I know for, for the remainder of the, I think it was like seventy-five thousand and then on the, uh, on the, for the grant, for the fuel farm. So, I, it might be for fuel purchase.
It might be, okay.
I'll, we'll check.
We'll check on that. That's fine, huh? Uh, so we've got a motion second. Although the favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, next item is item number seven, approval of treasury report. Any of your packets, Commissioner, for the month of January, provided by the treasurer. Uh, page one has our fiduciary investment pool, uh, include CDs. We've got a CD full of, uh, one twelve million, nine hundred and eighty-six thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars and sixty-three cents. Interest, uh, for the month was forty-two thousand, three hundred and six dollars and fourteen cents. And I guess for the whole, uh, year of December, uh, we, uh, well, uh, for the year of twenty-twenty-four through December, uh, we earned three hundred and fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven dollars and thirty-two cents of interest from all those, uh, investments. Uh, page two, we continue with demand accounts. We have a beginning balance, which includes our operating account, uh, the general fund, special one, bridge, waterworks, uh, for the enterprise, uh, fund. Uh, we had a beginning balance of two million, two hundred and eighty-four thousand, three hundred and two dollars and seventeen cents. We had revenues of four million, three hundred and eighteen thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight dollars and seventy-two cents. Expenses of three million, seven hundred and fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars and twelve cents for an ending balance of two million, eight hundred and forty-eight thousand, fifty-seven dollars and seventy-seven cents. And I think, uh, those expenses are just mainly, uh, investments as monies are.
So, taxable.
Exactly. Moved to, uh, interest-bearing accounts. Uh, another page three, fiduciary demand accounts, uh, continuing with forfeiture funds, uh, other trust accounts. We had a beginning balance of two hundred, two million, nine hundred and eighty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty-six dollars and eighty-six cents. We have revenues of three million, nine hundred and forty-seven thousand, five hundred and eighty-six dollars and sixty cents. Expenses of one million, nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars and forty cents for an ending balance of four million, nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand, six hundred and ninety-two dollars and six cents. Moving on to our, uh, monthly report of energy, our electricity amount for the month of January was sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven dollars and ninety-four cents for all accounts. And our water usage for the month of January was eight thousand, twenty-five dollars and thirty-four cents. We still have some, uh, royalty, uh, income from some of the gas wells around town. Uh, for the month of January, we had, uh, a check received in the amount of one thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine dollars and fifty-eight cents. So, for the year, we're at eleven thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars and twenty-two cents, almost ten, I think. Could be budgeted like fifty thousand. Hopefully, no, more than that tomorrow. Uh, moving on to page six, rents, uh, from our sign-up center. We saw for the month of December, for the month of January, uh, no revenue. The pavilion brought in nine hundred dollars. Uh, the Zapata Community Center brought in thirty-eight hundred dollars in rental fee. Moving on to page seven, uh, these are from the County Kirk Fund ten. For the months of January, we had revenues of seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-one dollars. Con- County Kirk Fund fifteen, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars. District Kirk Fund ten, four thousand, three hundred and sixty-three and forty cents. District Kirk Fund fifteen, one hundred and forty-nine dollars. We didn't have any new, uh, permits for the armed ordinance, uh, for the, in January, but our sales tax for the month of January was two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, twenty-six dollars and fifty-two cents. That must be for December. Is that the Christmas shopping? That's a little, little high, but I, I'm glad there's still economic activity in our community.
We should be at like thirty-three percent, and we're already at forty-two.
Yes, that's been good, actually, yes. Uh, moving on to page eight, other monthly revenues from our department. Our landfill generated for the month of January, thirty-six thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars. The jail brought in revenues of two hundred and two thousand, three hundred and eighty-three dollars and seventy-three cents. Jail telephone, fourteen thousand, two hundred dollars and twenty-nine cents. Jail bonds fees, one hundred and twenty dollars. Jail office fees, one hundred. And our EMS, uh, emergency services brought in eighty-two thousand, eight hundred and seventy-three dollars and ninety-eight cents. Um, page nine is our revenues from our local JP. JP Precinct one, for the month of January, generated four thousand, eight hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty-two cents. JP Precinct two, uh, brought in ten thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine dollars and seventy-seven cents. JP Precinct three brought in one thousand and four dollars. And JP Precinct four brought in three hundred and eleven dollars and sixty-two cents for the month of January. And then, uh, for the month of, uh, January, for water source, uh, and garbage collection for the month of January, uh, the combined total was five hundred and nine thousand, six hundred and forty-one dollars and four cents.
Motion to approve is presented.
Motion by Commissioner Solis to approve treasures report. At the ninety-second by Commissioner Gasa. Although in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to item number eight, is a pool of checks issued. In your packets, we had a check from January the twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five through February the sixth, twenty-twenty-five, for a total of six hundred and twenty-two thousand, one hundred and seventy-two dollars and seventeen cents.
Motion to approve is presented.
Motion to approve is presented by Commissioner Solis, seconded by Commissioner Gasa. Any discussion? Although in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number nine, tax assessor, collector, departmental report.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioner.
Morning.
Um, okay. Um, okay, for the collection for January was really good. Um, okay, for the general fund, we had one million, thirty-one dol- thirty-one thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars and sixty-six cents for the current collection. Delinquent collection was thirty thousand, seven hundred and forty and seventy-two cents. Penalty and interest, sixteen thousand, nine fifty-three, three. Refunds, one thousand, nine ninety-six, sixty-six. Uh, interest and sinking, we had a total, I'm just gonna go ahead and go down, uh, four hundred and twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three, forty-six. Farm-to-market, okay, we had six hundred and thirteen dollars and sixty-nine cents in refunds. Um, farm-to-market, we had three hundred and thirty-two dollars and twenty-one cents, fifty-eight cents in refunds. Special road and bridge, a hundred and fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and forty-nine and fifteen cents with two hundred and sixty-nine dollars and thirty-five cents in refunds. Uh, overpayments, two ninety-one, and delinquent attorneys, ten thousand, eight twenty-eight, twenty-eight, which is what we paid to them. Uh, we had a total, uh, collection of one million, six hundred and sixty-six thousand, one forty-six and four cents. Fees and other collections, we had tax certificates, twelve dollars. Hotel motel tax, five thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine, seventy-five. Copies and faxes, three seventy-five. Uh, interest earnings, eighty-two dollars and seventy-six cents with a net collection of one million, six hundred and seventy-one thousand, seven hundred and forty-four and thirty cents. Our, uh, hotel motel tax year-to-date collection is twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty-three and seventeen cents. And for the first time in a long time, we're over, uh.
I saw that, yes.
So.
We're usually a half a point, half a percent point behind.
So, percent.
Last year's collection. So, this year's collection rate, uh, seventy-six point fifty-three percent. Last year's was seventy-five point sixty percent.
We appreciate the taxpayer, local property taxpayers. I know it's a difficult time in our county, but they continue to, to, you know, pay their fair share and keep the county operating.
Exactly. Um, we, we had a tax sale from February the seventh.
Okay.
That we see, uh, the, the third, last Tuesday, the third and fourth. And, um, we collected, or, uh, the attorneys collected two hundred, a little over two hundred thousand dollars. This includes taxes that were paid by properties that were on, on the list.
They were not sold. Yes, they were pulled.
Yeah, they were pulled from the list, so those were paid. And, uh, and like you said, uh, we appreciate, you know, the taxpayers. It's tough and, but there's options. We, we, uh, encourage taxpayers to come in and make some sort of arrangement so that they can, uh, you know, bring down that burden.
And then keep their property certain. That's very important. So, as I know, we, uh, I guess the instruction from the court to our delinquent tax attorneys is try to work with, with every, with every landowner and try to, uh, recoup those taxes that are due. That's something I kind of wish for.
Exactly. Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
The report, commissioners, uh, moving on to the report and presentation. Item number ten is the Texas E S G R, Area thirteen recognizes Zapata County Commissioners' Court for its continued support for our veterans in Zapata County. I see you, Mr. Gonzalez, and, and father and son dual. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, for, uh, for being here this morning. The acronym for E S G R.
Thank you. Uh, the E S G R is the Employer Support of the Garden Reserve.
Okay.
We are at Department of Defense, okay? And we are in the state of Texas, and it's divided into regions. Uh, the area that, that I cover is Naredo, Webb County, Eagle Pass, and Zapata. From time to time, I know that I have been before. Uh, the last time was about eight years ago for the school district. We presented because there were a lot of employees, okay, that were members of the Texas, uh, Army National Guard or Reserve, Marines Reserve, or Army Reserve, Naval Reserve. So, because of that, okay, the county has always been very supportive. And not only because, okay, my son had been here as a commissioner prior to being a veteran service officer.
Yes.
But, okay, we start seeing that there were more grants that were being presented to the county. Okay, there were more veterans that were being qualified and getting, and all of that will bring in more money to the county.
And that's a testament to, to your son, folk for, uh, veteran service officer.
Because of that, the Texas E S G R recognizes that and wants to present this certificate of above and beyond, which would be, okay, with as follow. Employer Support of the Garden Reserve, okay, the presents the above and beyond award to Zapata County Court, uh, Zapata, Texas, okay, presented on behalf of the men and women of the National Guard and Reserve for outstanding service and continued support to our national defense.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. I think.
Thank you.
On the other court, I did, and, and folk, there's a, uh, you know, kind of backed this up. We, uh, it, some of these grants are prepaid through county funds, and then we, we work through reimbursements. And even with the limited funds, the court has taken a, 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 I guess, our point to say that we support our veterans who work for county. We're willing to pay upfront to have these services come into our community and then be able to re- recoup our reimbursement. But, uh, thank you, folk, for, I know we've got two or three active brands right now, uh, supporting our veterans, and, and we'll continue, yes.
They couldn't do it without Commissioners' Court. Um, there's a, a lot of other counties that don't have these grants. They don't, they don't provide the support. It could be maybe they don't have the financial means to put the money upfront. Uh, but Zapata County since twenty-twenty-one, um, has always helped out, and that's the only.
Yes. I appreciate your efforts to, to enlightening, uh, the brands that are out there. I mean, it takes work on your part to make sure to, to locate, identify these brands, and then bring them to court. And, and yes, we're always willing to help, but, uh, well, good job, uh, folks. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you.
You want to take a picture, commissioners?
Ready? One, two, three.
Good. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, commissioners, uh, that concludes our report and presentation. We'll monitor our action items. We will deliberate, consider action. Item number eleven is to approve an agreement with bench craft company to furnish custom-designed products to the Los Sebans' golf course and no cost to the county. Commissioners, I put this item on the, on the agenda. I received a, a phone call first from our, the operator of the golf course, Rene Pena, and then from the, uh, company representative, working with events. So, uh, their, what, what their company does is they place items, uh, at every tee or every other tee, whether such as benches, bog cleaners, trash cans, uh, some, something that we do need, uh, we don't have at our, at our golf course. And, and I asked, well, what part of your company model, how do you pay for this? And they say they, they do the, their payment, they garner their, uh, operating income, uh, through advertising. So, basically, they would approach local, uh, business owners or even corporate business owners and say, hey, you want to advertise your products or your company at the Los Sebans' golf course? You can be on hole one, tee one. We'll have a trash can, a bench, uh, bog cleaners, uh, and, and that would be how we would get these products. Uh, so it's something that we may consider. It's, it's, we're under no obligation to, you know, to, uh, to move forward with it, but I, I felt it was good enough.
Well, I've heard of the golf courses, Judge, that do this, uh, something similar to this. This is actually a good idea. Uh, has, how many try to review?
No, he hasn't. I, and he's not here today, so any, any action would, would have to require his oversight.
Does that make a motion to approve the agreement with bench craft pending approval from county attorney?
Very much.
And this would be for only nine holes? Because I know we have ten-hole courts.
Yes. Speaking with Rene, he says we may not need him at every hole.
Right. He go every other hole.
Yeah, so, uh, so it, yeah, it might be at every other hole. So, I, I think we, we don't have any, any, anything at all right now on any of our, I think, do we have trash cans?
We have free trash cans, but we do need new, uh, benches. We do need bog cleaners.
And then of course, the tee, the, the tee sign, the tee.
Sign, the, the tee markers. We do need a lot. So, this is definitely a great idea. You know, no cost to the county. We put in all the network.
Okay. Motion signed. Motion, uh, to approve pending, uh, attorney review, seconded by Commissioner Gasa. Any other discussion? Although in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to item number twelve is to change title of slot number one, Medavia Pena, administrative assistant to Zapata County shop administrator. Commissioner Doc, we've been fortunate to bring Media on board, I guess, several years ago. Uh, she has basically transformed our county shop and, uh, and really kept accurate records of what's, uh, the day-to-day activities, uh, maintenance records on, on their equipment, uh, dealing with vendors on behalf of, of the commissioners, and, and just working on phone calls, anything that is needed, relay those, those messages to the, uh, to, to all the, uh, the heads of, including the commissioners. And, uh, so, I, she asked me if, if it would be possible, uh, to re-classify her position from just an assistant. Uh, and I said, well, I, I think what you're doing there is qualifying as shop administrator. I think she's doing a lot of administrative work. I, I did relay to her that we are in mid-year, budget year, so there wouldn't be any, uh, financial, uh, enhancement coming, uh, from, uh, from this. But I think, uh, I think she has earned, uh, the title administrator of the shop anyway, so I, I.
Harry, why don't we go into executive session and discuss it, Judge?
We could, uh, but I'm already, we're most of discussing in an open session.
Okay, but if we, I'm, I'm making a motion to go into.
Okay. Got a motion there, executive session, for a second?
I think, I think she's done a great, great job. I know there's been some issues with, uh, Commissioner Moya. I know he has some concerns, uh, different issues that he's mentioned. Uh, but with me, I have had no issues with Ms. Pena. I think she's done a tremendous job, uh, with the crew, you know, with, uh, in assisting in anything that we do need. Uh, I know you have some concerns. Is that?
Yes, it's in reference to my crew and my guys that I've had run-ins with them. I don't know. You know, we just want to iron some things out, and it'd be best if we go into executive session, you know, to speak about it. I mean, it's totally a job. I'll send the motion.
I, I still second the motion, uh, to change the position, uh, but I would like for, for those, uh, roommates to be ironed.
Yeah, I think any discussions, I'm sure you can have.
Many of us, I'm setting up for my guys, you know, to their rates concerned, and I'm here to defend my, my guys.
So, we got a motion in the second to, uh, re-classify her to administrator, uh,
Will her job description change, or what's?
No, she has, I'll tell you what, she, uh, attends the phone calls twenty-four-seven from Commissioners, precinct two leaders, county departments, county making's employees, vendors. She also receives calls from residents with community Zapata. She communicates with two leaders on a daily basis to the community, such as branch shifting of branch, trash, road hazard, et cetera. She coordinates the movement of big equipment for office surveys from all locations under private general permits. Uh, purchasing and billing, she communicates with vendors for quotes and estimates to get, uh, better pricing for two leaders and mechanics orders. As for POs, submits them to vendors, make sure the merchandise is paid as soon as possible, and that all POs are pulled off. She monitors and updates all precincts and shop budgets. Uh, she also keeps inventory. She maintains shop, all precinct vehicles and large equipment. Make sure they have logos. They make sure they're legal. Uh, they have unit numbers, uh, state inspections, uh, renewals. She makes sure that oil changes and all vehicle maintenance is done on a timely basis. Tools, uh, she's paying suppliers, office suppliers, and purchasing orders. Uh, she also keeps track of all sick leave and comp time for all county shop employees. And, and of course, the office duties, she's there in the office. She has Excel, Excel sheets in the computer to keep all documentation, inventory, sick leave, comp time, incident reports, POs, and all other information. So I can tell you, before she came in, we didn't have any of this. So, uh, we were lacking tremendously. Uh, our traders, uh, were always having tech issues with D P S because we didn't have the proper permitting or licensing. They're all up to date, our maintenance on our very expensive equipment is being taken care of, so I, those are, that's her, uh, job description, Commissioner.
So, okay, it's going to be the same?
Yeah, or sorry, for now, we can adjust it during mid-year, uh, because, I mean, you just don't adjust during mid-year, but, uh, but that's something that we may consider in the next budget year depending on, on the revenue that come in, but, uh, I think she's earned that time. So there is a motion in the second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 I'm against, just on the record.
Okay, four, uh, four, one against. Motion passes. Item number thirteen is to approve the purchase of a twenty twenty twenty-five F one fifty for thirty-nine thousand nine hundred from certificate of obligation, precinct one, Commissioner?
Yes, uh, we have, uh, our oldest vehicle is a nineteen ninety-nine F one fifty that we still use and I'm requesting that we purchase a new one under the certificate of obligation because we are supposed to get a part of that. And last do we check, we're supposed to get two hundred thousand, so I wanted to see if we can get a head start and get the, the vehicle in, if possible.
Do we have that Los Angeles vehicle already?
Yes, we already have it on C D.
To approve.
Have we, have we paid, uh, have we paid off, um, the matches for the grants?
No, this is fair.
No, we, we need to do some really good arithmetic. We, we might end up being short on something. So the two hundred K was an estimate, uh, that the commissioners, I think we have given priority to, of course, the grants.
I, I think the C O is initially, uh, in primarily for the grants to cover, uh, our portion, our match. So I think it'd be better if we wait, Commissioner. Uh, you know, your funds are still going to be your funds at the end of the day, but we don't have an exact amount yet. It could be less, it could be more, you know, but my, uh, my motion would be if we wait.
So, so we got a motion to approve, so is there a second?
Cause what we know by the next meeting, exactly how much we have?
No, we know how much we have, we just don't know how much we're going to pay out on the.
That's, that's.
We just want to exhaust it. We're, we're, we're supposed to be at two point seven with the matches and we got a three point nine, uh, four million, so there's going to be more than thirty-nine thousand for each commission.
Right.
I mean, we know that Mr. Gonzalez came and told us it's around two hundred thousand, so we're going to have money to cover.
Well, I think part of it is the, the more pressing repairs of, uh, the water plant, how much of course estimates tend to rise every, every time we, we did something out. So we're having to repair, uh, part of, part of the going out for these funds. And what we informed the public, uh, for going out for the certificates of obligation was we need to repair the four stand, three stand pipes, uh, and, and the ground storage tank and our bottoms. And those estimates range from anywhere from one point five to two million dollars. So right off the bat, that's going to take the majority of the funding. And then we've got, uh, sewer projects, uh, lift stations, uh, that, uh, require new pumps. So the majority of the funding was, uh, for the water plant, the sewer plant and the grants. In the end, there were some, uh, uh, a few, uh, requests from Water Bridge as to, uh, we, we needed a, a few pieces of equipment. How much that will be, I think has to be determined, so that's to be determined, so.
So to your understanding, you think it will cover the, at least the fifty?
Well, it, it, it's, it's a situation where the, the truck will probably be able to get purchased, but I guess what the, what I'm getting a sense from the court is we're trying to wait until we get to the point where we, we know how much money everybody has.
Right, you know, afterwards, I mean, I'm sure you, you, you might have that money, which I'm not saying, oh, let's take care of it.
Yeah, once we get the money, I will have to go to Commissioner's Court, it's just, you know.
Yeah.
I, I don't think the court is saying for you, not.
No, no, it's not that, it's just that.
It's, it's going to happen, and just right now we need to appropriate, uh.
So, so the grants.
There's no second, that's the nice thing, it's not, we didn't explain.
No, no, I'm sure the money will be, but, but, so we have two million dollars for the water plant and sewer plant. We have a million dollars that we are, uh, going to be liable for, for the show barn, uh, for the arena, for each arena. That, that's our matching, that's three million. And then we, we have some match on, uh, the Parks and Wildlife, uh, and, uh, and also at the fire station.
Along with what a million, right?
So, yeah, so it's going to be very tight. I think eight hundred thousand is an overreach in the end. Uh, we may spend the eight hundred thousand beforehand and then not have enough to match those, uh, projects that really wasn't.
Which are very important.
Or, or we'll have to cut back on, on the water plant improvements, so that's what we're looking at. Something's got to give, we, we're not going to have enough. I, I can tell you with four million dollars, it's going to go quick because the estimates from our engineer on the, uh, repairs, uh, to the water plant were from one point five to two million dollars. Now, we did apply for some grants, uh, to compensate for that. We don't know whether they're going to be actually funded or not. I mean, we can wait a few months, but I, I'd hate to spend the money and then say those grants did, did not get funded and then we're stuck with, yeah, we've got a new truck, but our water plants are, are, are not in good shape, so I would rather wait.
The money most likely will be there, we just don't want to take the chance.
Yeah, that just, yeah, I mean, yeah, it was good, don't worry.
And, and, well, yeah. I guess I, I apologize to Commissioner.
I'm sure we can table it, uh.
Yeah, and the next item, let's table it as well.
I would say that I, let me rephrase my mo, my motion is going to be to table item thirteen, item fourteen.
Okay, that, and that's, that's fair, and then we'll find out where we're at, but, uh.
Do you have a timeline, Judge, or we can find out?
So part of, part of the funding for, for the water plant that we, uh, applied for was part of the environmental green energy initiatives that, uh, President Biden had put forward. Uh, the administration has a different, uh, take on, on that type of funding. So I think we'll know pretty soon, uh, whether those grants are going to be paused, taken off, canceled, uh, in the very near future.
And that's the other thing, some of those grants might not come to, to be, so you might even have more money, so we just don't know.
We might have more money, but we, I, I, it's hard to risk it at this point.
I mean, more money for the commissioners, right?
Correct.
Yeah. So we got a motion to table by Commissioner, uh, Gonzalez, uh, items thirteen and fourteen, second by Commissioner Solis, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion tabled. Item number fifteen is to discuss payment of invoices led from the previous sheriff's office administration. Uh, I know we had quite a few sheriff that, uh, your office has been dealing, trying to clean up, uh, I guess.
Yeah, so then they're still rolling in, but as they're coming in, I'll, I'll get with the auditor.
I, I did, I, and I, I visited with the auditor on, on one bill. I, I did receive, uh, a, a phone call from a, a previous officer, an ex-officer from the sheriff's department about some training he had, uh, done.
He has, he knows late December, Judge, uh, somewhere.
Five hundred, yeah. Yes, yeah, for five hundred dollars. He's telling me that, I guess, the trainer who trained him on his dog is trying to, to file charges on him for non-payment for effective services, so I think, uh, if the training wasn't done, I think we need to pay at least that one.
Well, that's what we've been discussing, just going through all of them and seeing which ones, uh, maybe some of them.
Were approved which ones today, like, I mean, I, there's, there's a whole bunch. I'm only pretty sure, like to use toll roads, uh, for his travels, uh, so we got to pay the toll road.
Those we, those we're, we're paying, yes.
Okay, so let's, let's say we will pay the five hundred dollars, we'll pay all the toll, uh, roads, uh, you, uh, invoices, which I don't know how much they add up to, but they're, they're considerable amount, uh, of.
And then we're also checking to see some of those P O's maybe already got.
So we can approve the toll roads. Uh, there's some invoices for spectrum, I think we upgraded the system, I think we got to upgrade those.
And I know there's some for, uh, uh, internet or air cards, but we're, I, I, we were going to meet with the representative today, but he didn't come in, uh, but we're going to go ahead and cancel it. Dan Bates is like September, October, so it's about.
Although there's, those issues, you can, uh, talk to the, the beginning of the show. I just want to make sure the courts, we're moving, giving the authority to take care of these things.
Well, we've been, we've been going back and forth and we've been discussing.
Do you have a total for the toll roads?
No, I do not.
So for months of, uh, two, three years to delivering, is there?
There, there is some, also some, uh, large invoice for some construction which may have, or may have not been performed.
Yes, and that I do not know, Judge, I know they went to present it to me, but I was like, scared this was with the previous administration, I don't know if it was done or not, so.
Yeah, that was like for fourteen, fifteen?
That's a, there's a bill for, uh, seven thousand eight hundred and ten dollars for, uh, water line repairs.
So those are all, we need to.
That seems to be a large amount for water line repairs.
I think they are probably like September, October, so.
Uh, there's, uh, one from September, one from October, one from November, two from November, one from December for a total of, uh, seven thousand, but, uh, yeah, there, there's some pretty hefty bills here.
I think the total, Judge, for the toll roads is a hundred thirty-nine dollars with eighty-one cents.
Yeah, so that one we can take care, take care of the five hundred spectrum.
Sure.
Without, except the.
Yeah, on the, on the internet, we'll, we'll resolve it with, uh, with the rep and see where we're at because, uh, like I said, it hadn't been paid since September and we're trying to see, I think they're still bidding us, but I'm going to tell them that he needs to, we, we had already reached out, but they never called us back yet, so, so we're waiting. That's why we're waiting for the representative today.
Okay. And we're just hold off on the, on the.
And the construction one, I mean, we do have people that are there from previous, uh, from a previous sheriff that can tell us, you know, and, and help us out on all of the.
Especially on the constructive, which seems to be the largest one.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay. Cause in, in reviewing other invoices, they were always, like, they would always pay right away, so I just want to make sure that the job was done.
So will we be taking care of the spectrum, uh, and toll roads?
The spectrum, uh, is that the whole spectrum? Well, the spectrum should be paid. I think that's, maybe it was the cable that they had paid for months and.
How are we doing on, uh, on our camera system at the regional jail?
They're out there today, Judge.
They're, so we have a, we have a great, uh, that's on.
On Friday we met and, and we're going to see the way, if, if everything is completed by Sunday, then we'll, we'll, we're going to review the system.
Yeah, we need to get those.
And, and, you know, we, I told them that the contract's going to start, uh, to, or not the warranty, upon completion.
Okay.
So that's one, the warranty for the cameras and the, uh, uh.
Are you going to be replacing the, the?
No, no, they, they should be, we're going to see, we already saw the value of them, Judge, so we're going to see how, how it is. How it's going to work out, and they're going to take out the, the existing cables from the previous cameras.
Okay, all right, okay.
So it makes sense, I mean, we, we had a good discussion on credit.
So they're upgrading the wiring also?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Lot of notes. So there, there is one.
They're probably going to end up paying from, cause we're going to auction, auction vehicles, so we're probably going to pay for that.
I guess there's, uh, quite a few here for, uh, a hundred cupcakes and five mixtapes from the local bakeries, uh.
Then I don't know, Judge, do, like I said.
A hundred and forty-nine dollars for a hundred cupcakes. I don't know what kind of benefit the county taxpayer would receive from that.
Would you want to?
I mean, I would pay for those, honestly, but I, I think.
I was going to, I was going to pay for general, from general fund or stuff like that. Yeah, those were stuff that I kind of set aside, that I was like, I'm not paying cupcakes.
Yeah. So both of you have been working together, we're.
Yes.
We, we, we've been.
So we discussed with county attorney which one we can pay, which ones we can't, okay?
No, I, I haven't discussed any of the county attorney, not on these items.
Yeah, I was going to pick.
Yes.
All right, well, I, I guess, pay the ones that you, that feel are valid and, uh, and I guess that would be the, the motion from the court.
If I do have questions on some, I'll bring it to the court, you know, if it's.
I make a motion to pay the valid invoices.
Motion by Commissioner Morales, second by Commissioner Solis. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to item number, uh, fit sixteen is to approve a memorandum of understanding between Zapata County Sheriff's Office and Zapata County Fire Department for the use of the sheriff's office radio channels.
Yes, Judge, this is, it is, it is, it's been three years without communication.
I know, it's terrible.
And I was able to get it done and, uh, with the chief and.
Appreciate y'all working together, Danny, thank you, it's so important for our community.
It is, it is, uh, of course, and it benefits only the community.
Absolutely.
Of course, us as well, because we work hand in hand, but more than anything, the community, Judge, so, uh, and it's gone through legal, they, it's been approved, Judge. So I'm going to cite it and then if you can witness it for us.
All right.
Judge.
So I'm going to make a motion to approve the.
Motion by Commissioner, to approve the memorandum of understanding, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries and we'll, we'll go ahead and sign it off. Yes, very important. How, how's your equipment, Danny?
Going good.
You're doing good?
Going great. We're, right now, we're just, uh, still with, uh, vendors as far as that, uh, large brush trucks.
Yes, you'll have an announcement on that pretty soon.
Very soon, yeah, we're still getting.
You need this to Mary Jane?
Yes.
We're still getting vendors sending their, their proposals and, uh, different ones, different pricing, so we don't want to just jump on, on one. We want to get a variety of, of offers.
Of course, it's nothing to do with the item, but it's just, it's a good announcement. I think, uh, the fire station received, the fire department received a, a sizable grant.
Yes, two hundred and fifty thousand.
Yes, so we'll be working on a, a new, uh, is it a, a pumper or a?
We're still, we're still, we're still figuring that out, we're trying to figure it out yet, uh, to see what's in the best interest for the department and for, for the community, as far as the, the equipment.
Thank you so much. We've got one more sheriff.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Item number seventeen is to approve the proposal from Justice Solutions to post cloud imaging for Zapata County Sheriff's Office and.
On this item, Judge, it's, we currently don't have it, we've been having problems, it's, it's been an ongoing problem. I think even for, since they came aboard, uh, they're going to charge us a hundred and fifty a month. Uh, the benefit to it, Judge, when the patrolmen are on the streets, they can also, through their laptops, if somebody, if they stop somebody and they, uh, they give them their I D, it'll show up mug shots or any information, uh, you know, will be.
Probably on the data page.
Yes, on the database, it will be protected from cyber attacks and, and they've been working, uh, uh, hand in hand with I T on it and, and, uh, but the good thing is that he won't charge us anything or bills until this upcoming, uh, uh, fiscal year. So for now.
The issue, okay.
The issue is.
Is it just a hundred and fifty dollars a month?
Yes, yes, but he's going to give it to us free until October, but he wants, he needs something signed.
That's, that's a good deal.
So it'll be added to the computer, I, I think it's under the line item, computer expense.
Yes.
Where they pay the Justice Solutions, so it'll, it'll add a thousand eight hundred for the whole year, per year.
All right, I'll make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Solis, second by Commissioner Morales, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Judge, do you have the sheet to, for the signature?
Uh, gave it to Mary Jane.
No, on the, for the justice, because it's.
Do you have to sign off on it?
If you give it to her, then I'll pick it up. That's it for me, Judge.
Thank you.
So, cause you already have the license agreement, right, with them, is it just an?
Yes, it's an additional.
Okay, okay. All right, that's something that our county attorney won't have to review, I guess, we've already covered. Item, uh, number eighteen is to request a donation from the Zapata County Judge and Commissioner's Court for the upcoming Region Eight County and District Heart Spring Conference in Eagle Pass, Texas. Conference will be held, will be held on April the ninth through the eleventh, twenty twenty-five. This donation will be used to sponsor one of our three breaks during the conference. Hey, Mr. Gonzalez, how are you?
I realized it, the whole thing, I'm so sorry.
Hey, it's precise, yeah, very detailed.
I'm so sorry, I didn't put everything on, I'm sorry, but.
I think the key word there is donation, so you're, you're asking for personal donations?
I mean, I talked to you about it, it's, uh, Mary Jane and myself, it's, uh, we'll be hosting a, uh, the Region Eight Conference in, uh, Eagle Pass.
Okay.
And, uh, um, we have different vendors that help us out with the welcome receptions and, and Thursday dinner and breakfast and stuff. And I, I think I asked you if you can help us out with, uh, one of the breakfasts, it's like about five hundred and ten dollars.
Yeah, I, I think, just talking, I, auditor, I said, is this a, uh, not a legal expense, but a, uh, verified little expense from our general fund? We've got issues, I, I think the easiest way to cover this, Commissioner, we all come up with a hundred bucks each, uh, give a donation.
I'm, I'm. I'm the donor.
And, and that way, next year, I, I think we get more, uh, clarification on, on exactly how we can use taxpayer funds. I, I tend to.
Judge, if there's a problem, I can.
No, 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 there's not a problem, but I think, I'm, I'm, I think we're all good for a hundred dollars and we want Zapata County to be, you know, recognized.
And you'll be posted on that, on, on, we have posted it, it's yours or?
Sure, no, but it's something, that's, that's a regular request, I, I'm willing to cooperate and pitch in.
More support.
So, by when do you need this, uh?
Uh, maybe the end of March.
Okay, we'll, we'll get you a check and then we'll get you five checks and a hundred bucks. All right, thank you, and yes, we want y'all to be recognized.
Judge, Commissioner, because both of our offices are going to be involved, the office is going to be closed for three days.
Right, I understand that. Okay, so y'all, of course, provide, uh, the notification to the public.
Yes, we'll do that.
And, and I, what I do is I transfer the, the main line to my phone.
I can do that too.
That's what I do, uh, and the girls work from the laptops, uh, you know.
If you get, Commissioner, if you did get clarification, uh, from.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing for by, uh, next one, Commissioner's Court meeting, uh.
We may be able to contribute from, it, it just, I don't know if it's.
It's also the wording, uh, the wording to be different, but I can, I can talk to you and.
I did the bullpen. I did the bullpen, I'm going with the wording, I don't know.
Oh, just look into it. So, the next, I think, it's easy, we'll put a hundred dollars, and that'll take care of it, okay? Okay, thank you, thank you.
And I'll stay as I'm next, but on the other.
Okay, and I got one more, so I got a motion.
Who's, who did the motions?
Commissioners Solis and then Commissioner Morales. Oh, Moya, Moya?
Solis Moya, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Moya, all, everybody in favor? Alright, item, uh, number nineteen is to approve the use of the, our meeting exhibit hall on Sunday, March the second, twenty twenty five for the Intocable Pivi Gold Show twenty twenty five. Permission had been acquired from the Zapata County Fair Association.
Judge, we, we, I've been, um, putting on the show for the kids of Zapata for the last twenty three years. And every, every year we get, like, it started off, we would kick up, we started off with the old, old, um, when it was an open canopy for the, many months ago. With maybe like about twenty to thirty kids, and we've grown, last year we had three hundred and twenty.
Incredible.
And, and it's a, it's an afternoon thing and, and, but the fair association has been giving me a lot of trouble. I mean, I, my hat's off to them, because it's a lot of work to be on the fair association.
But it says you got permission from them.
I got permission, but it's this year. I'm sure that I'm not gonna be, they're gonna kick me out next year. I refuse to be, we would use a Z C F A label or, or their, their logo out of courtesy. But they never, they never given us a penny, you know, it was just out of courtesy. Well, last year, this, this, uh, last year, when they started, they, they asked me to take it off, that they will not, I didn't, they didn't wanna be represented by us.
Would that be for liability purposes?
They said that it was a liability purpose, but, um, they are now putting on a mountain bustin' and all that, well, they, that's what they said, it was liability.
So March, I think, is that like the week before the fair or?
Yeah, it's, it's Sunday before.
They have, they have, um, uh, they're gonna have a mountain bustin' in the cap, uh, uh, well, something, um, bull riding. On the, on the twenty eighth.
It's, it's a good thing.
It's a good thing, it's a good thing, you want our fair to grow. I, I'm all for the fair, my kids are all a part of the fair. Um, and on first, they have the trail ride, uh, the, and they have, um, a roping. So, uh, they, they didn't have anything on second, so they went ahead and let me use it on the second, but I'm sure.
So I made a motion to, uh, to, uh, grant, um, what is it, to Intocable Pivi Gold Show for twenty twenty five on March second. And I'll send you those, uh, we'll post the aye now.
We've been taken.
Motion by Commissioner Solis, seconded by Commissioner Moya. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We have been taken, uh, we're now part of the Intocable, uh, four H Horse Club, which is through the, uh, Jesse Iglesias and the four H there.
Right.
It's a nonprofit, we're gonna be working with them, so, uh, now we're the Intocable Pivi.
So, so, I mean, is that, I think something that the court may in the, in the future, uh, request from you is use of funds, I mean, it's a large event. Uh, when a nonprofit creates free use of something, we, we have a, a responsibility to explain it to the public exactly what these funds are being used for. Uh, whether there's any profit, what these funds are for, sponsorships.
I think, Judge, I, I, I provided you with, with, uh, with an invoice and then a spreadsheet, my type of spreadsheet, showing you where exactly where the monies went. Because we charge for the buckles, but we don't, we, as a matter of fact, we pay out of pocket. For next year, um, I think I'm gonna have to go to come before you, uh, to ask for the, the, um, is that, I mean, exhibit hall again, is that correct? Because they're, they're, we're not part of the fair associ- association anymore. They're not gonna, they're not, they're gonna kick me out somehow. So would I do that, just come before you?
I mean, it was a court duty away, it's something.
If you're good to have, provide the information, uh, to the public, so exactly why, you know, the court is making a decision that we made or may not make.
Okay, and, and I'm going to, they, they questioned my, my, um, like, I think they said, okay, there's three hundred and twenty kids at fifty dollars a child, that's a lot of money. You know, that's what we charge, so where's that money going? And I was able to show them, it goes exactly to, you know, goes out to the, for the buckles. And, uh, we have our, our sponsors for the T, their kids, their kids T-shirts. We actually pay out of pocket on our own.
Yes, and I know it's, uh, they're expensive to put on these, I.
Yes, and the kids love it. We have two hundred and one kids this year.
That's fine.
Judge, another question. Um, as far as the, the exhibit hall, will we have to do our own cleaning as far as bathrooms and stuff? I know, uh, Commissioner Morales helped us last year, but they put on several, uh, prospect shows, and the la- last year that we went in, the bathrooms were a mess. So would we have to write that?
I mean, that, hopefully, that would, I, if you could, uh, put that place added in the type of expense that you have and maybe have a contractor to, to help clean, cause we're overwhelmed, all those, all.
We don't have any. We don't, we don't have a penny, I have to pay out of pocket.
Our guy will be, we're gonna help you out, whatever they, you can come and visit, no worries.
Okay. Just, I mean, we don't, we, uh, y'all sure we were the.
So there was no products, there, there, uh, no paper, no, what do you say, everything was?
The, the, uh, prospect shows, there's a lot of children and a lot of, uh, people that go in there too, so the bathrooms are used and, and left like that. Until I get the fair association comes in is when they start cleaning them out. So, um, we use it on the second.
Does the fair association clean up or does it?
Yeah, they have someone that comes. We clean them before we start and then during those days, we have someone contract.
So maybe you need to partner with the fair association, say, how, how do we take care of? Yeah. Cause there, you said there's an event on the first?
There's an event on the first, uh, on the twenty eighth, event on the first.
Not in there?
So it should be able to get cleaned by Friday? This is a Sunday event, correct?
Yes, so will I be allowed to go to, to have a key and go, uh, check on it and see if we need to start cleaning because we can.
Okay, there's a question.
I'll, we'll take it.
Oh, Friday, we can send some, some.
Yeah, I might as well, I would have a hundred percent help anybody out, so.
Send through on Friday.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Alright, thank you, thank you. We already voted, right, Mary Jane?
Yes.
Yes.
We'll move on, the item number twenty is, uh, to approve the hire for the Personnel Department and Administrator Assistant. Position effective two, ten, twenty twenty five, we got it.
Motion approved.
Got a motion, do we find out who it is first?
Um, um, after our interviews, uh, I did introduce six individuals for the position. Um, our recommendation was Ms. Erica Santos.
Motion to approve, uh, Ms. Erica Santos, her second, seconded by Commissioner Solis. The salary, uh, I have a question on the salary, Nelly, I, and the reason I ask for that position is, what, what does the salary say that?
Um, twenty seven?
Twenty seven. We've got clerks in departments, county clerk, tax collector, uh, district clerk, that have been there many, many years and they're, I don't think they're earning that. Uh, so, I, I just, I think, and that position had that salary, uh, the, the court approved that position because there was a transfer uh, from another department and, and the, the position transferred with the salary. But Commissioner, I think we need to start that salary at a lower position that many of our clerks are earning. I just think for morale, it's not, I mean, if, if there was a management, uh, management position, but this is a clerk position.
What is the, what is the average salary?
You're looking at twenty one, twenty two?
So now we have to go to, for interviews again and revise them on the salary?
No, well, we can set the salary. I mean, we can hire her, but I, I'll just bring it up, cause I, I get, I do feel for those employees, uh, because of our situation that have been earning substantially less for many, many years of service and I, I, like I told you right here, uh.
I mean, but when the budget comes in in October, we can talk about that, it's already been budgeted.
Well, we can, Commissioner, but the fact is we have re- limited funds to make large adjustments.
Well, we have a lot of part-time positions too that we can look into as well.
We can let go our folks if that's what the court desires, but I can tell you, a, a new deputy clerk to the tax collector, uh, the, uh, office came in at twenty one thousand eight hundred, starting.
Well, I would just wish, I mean, it would've been nice to have known beforehand that, before we interviewed.
So, I, I'm just bringing it up, we've got a lot of clerks that are earning because of that, so we approve it. Uh, I, I think not, it, it's disappointing, uh, to those employees that have worked many, many years and are, are not earning at that salary yet. With basically the same type of, of position, but we're good. The, the, the motion is to, we got a motion by Commissioner, uh, Moya, seconded by Commissioner Solis. And the salary to keep it at, uh, the, the level it was at, is that the motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we got a motion to second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Move on to, uh, item number twenty one, is it, is a table, Commissioner, to approve provision of four hundred thousand IGT from Laredo Medical Center for the district year fourteen U C Advanced IGT due on February the third one. We have table this for the July, uh, transfer, so we've, we've got a few months to decide on this.
So table?
Table, yeah, table. I'm gonna put it back on.
Can I, can I have a motion in a second?
Motion. Motion table by Commissioner Solis, seconded by Commissioner Morales, all those in favor say aye. Motion table. Item number twenty two is to review status of the San Ignacio Water Plant, Gonzalez. Morning, Gonzalez.
Morning.
I, I was there yesterday, look, Scott, it was nicely painted, all the tanks. I see your payment request, uh, a hundred percent complete on, move to the line item.
Yes, uh, on the, um, what, what we have, uh, good morning, good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
What we have is the, um, on the, on this project, we're looking at, we did a walkthrough and, uh, we, uh, carried, uh, substantially complete. There is some punch list items that they're working on, so what I would recommend is that if we're able to approve the, uh, invoices that are pending and then the court holds the payment until those punch list items are complete.
On the retainage?
On the re.
Yeah, cause there's two invoices, right?
Yeah, there's.
Application number, uh, eleven and twelve?
Yes, twelve. There's application number eleven and.
So, you would recommend we approve, uh, payment application number eleven and, and, uh, or both of them?
No, I would, I would approve.
But why the check gets out? How do you say, how to, cause you?
But it comes to work.
The retainage?
Yes.
So you want us to approve both invoices? Cause the, the second one, number twelve, is the retainage, right?
Yes.
That would be the, the last thing.
That would be the last thing.
So you, you want us to issue them out without the?
No, no, I, I want you to approve them, but not issue them out.
Okay, alright, okay.
Yes, that's what you mentioned, right?
Yes, that's correct.
So they're gonna, we're gonna hold them until?
We'll, we'll hold it twelve, we'll, we'll issue eleven, right?
Issue eleven and hold twelve.
Okay.
Until punch list items are complete. Once those punch list items are complete, then we can issue, uh, invoice number twelve and, uh, release it. We're, we're issuing it, but we're gonna release it.
Okay.
Until the punch list is, uh, approved by, by you?
Yes. Okay, Commissioners, uh, number eleven is for a hundred and seventy six thousand eight thirty seven and seventy five cents. And application number twelve, invoice number twelve is, uh, for.
Four ninety thousand nine ten.
Okay.
Nine ten? Yes.
Even.
Motion to approve, Judge, is presented. Motion to approve it again by Commissioner Solis, seconded by Commissioner Morales. Any discussion? I think, discussion?
I have to go with all you.
Okay.
Our final as well, then.
Motion was, uh, motion was already passed.
Sorry.
Motion was already passed.
Well, it, a good thing, we got our audit in, so we got, received a reimbursement for all the money we had paid out and initially, we, we received, uh, Commissioners, uh, a reimbursement of six hundred and eleven thousand on this project that we had spent out of pocket.
That's great.
So, we have, we have the money to pay the last.
So next time you have to start off with yours.
Yeah, no, I, I usually go with mine.
What's your invoice number?
But, and we're doing the final, um, ours is, uh, if, the invoice number is gonna be twenty seven, six twenty four. And it's gonna be for, um, there's one that's, it's gonna be for twenty two five.
Can we add that to the motion, Mr. Mary Jane?
Yes.
For engineering.
And then we'll hold it in the file on the retained this year.
And that one I hold also?
Yeah, until retained this year, so.
I, I, I was noticing, Commissioner Gonzalez, I mean, if the water plant looks really pretty good on the improvements we made. I did notice yesterday that, that Allen tank that's, I.
That's broken?
Yeah.
We're gonna remove that.
You're gonna remove that, thank God, yes, I said, I, I wanna bring, uh, T A to push off the water plant, that they're gonna have that there.
No, that, that's being removed.
Okay.
Yes, yeah, and, uh, yeah, that, that, uh, I don't, I didn't like either the way it was, and it's been like that for years, but it's just not.
Yeah, I just, it's not a good deal.
The base where it's hit, it's already cracked and it's kind of, uh, leaning to one side. We're gonna remove it and we're ready, uh, we have two new tanks that we're gonna be using. We're also no longer mixing our own, uh.
You mentioned that.
Yeah, so then that's gonna come in, in a batch, like in a tote, and we'll just pump it.
Good deal, yes, I, I just, I said, we need to take care, um, might not have been on the original contract, but we need to take care of that.
Yeah, no, yeah, that's the one. So, and then the other item is, um, uh, that's not on the, on the contract, but I, I spoke into Mr. Martinez. Uh, the main power that's coming to the plant, as it's coming into the plant, uh, I guess, over the years, that, that hole that's receiving the original power has, is, um, is old and deteriorated.
Is that hole belong to A P or less?
I'm not sure.
I, I think we should, uh, reach out to A P, I think it's there.
It, it, it may be because that's the, uh, source for the plant, but it is cracked and.
It, it is on the, the verge of fading, so we do need to replace it, but I think we should reach out to A P and, I, I think it's probably their fault, I'm hoping.
Once you get the bodies locked in, you gotta be known, so I can be there when you get.
It'd be nice.
And I, I think we should do a ribbon cutting also.
Yeah, that's a great idea. So we'll do a ribbon cutting for, when we do the final walkthrough, and we'll do ribbon cutting and, and.
Yeah, it's a nice project.
It's a better quality, uh, better sustainability. We're, we're now feeding the elevated tanks from the top and exiting on the bottom. Um, we're ready, the plant is running on automatic, so you guys, they just turn it on in the morning and everything else turns on and off on its own as it meets water or when it's filled, it shuts off.
Their control system?
Did we ever get a backup system for that or like a generator or something?
It has a generator, it's functioning, so we're able to connect to the backup generator.
Yeah, it is functioning, it turns on every third day, I think.
Yes, every Wednesday.
Yeah.
And it goes on for thirty minutes and then.
That control panel is, is oppressive, um.
Yes, because it, it's the, uh, I guess the brains of, on the plant where, uh, all the tanks have, uh, a control and once it reaches either a low level or a high level, it'll shut down to protect the pumps or it'll shut off to pre- prevent it from, uh, overfilling.
That, that was a good project.
So then that, that, uh, it's, we're gonna have, uh, better quality and, uh, more, uh, water for, for the community and.
Very good project, can compete on time, which is really good, uh, so, got a motion in the second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carried. Oh, I think, yeah, it goes to Act Star first, uh, one seventy six. Okay, to the.
We'll, we'll be releasing it, actually.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, item number twenty.
We'll, we'll talk about, we'll discuss about the.
Okay, item number twenty three is to review status on the Zapata Booster Station.
Okay, on the booster station, I did, uh, I did reach out to the, uh, we're, that's the one that we brought in, uh, last, um, last quarter, so that we can get an extension on. I did reach out to the tank manufacturer that was, uh, we were waiting on getting those, um, those equipment. They were able to move up the delivery and completion by almost a month, which is, we knew we were gonna be finishing towards the end of March for that delivery and completion. Now we're looking at the end of February, which is, that's, that moves us up pretty good. And, um, they're, they're, uh, waiting to get that, they're waiting also on backup generator and the, um, the chemical feed system. Once those equipment turns in, they'll be installed and we should hopefully be done before the deadline that we requested on that extension.
Yeah, is it, they can't afford to extend that one any longer?
No, we can't. So we already extended as, as much as we could request and, uh, with that moving up a little bit, hopefully we're, we'll be done on the time.
Alright, no action.
No, no, it's just a report.
Yeah.
Item number twenty four is to review status on the Zapata Medina Grange Project.
Okay, on that one, Judge and Commissioners, we did get, uh, receive, um, we received the bonding and the contracts, we sent them to the project administrator. I did, uh, communicate to the administration team that we're gonna be doing the clearing and the grading on the plant. They asked if we were gonna put it, the county's work through the project or if we were gonna do it as part of like maintenance or part of county work without putting it through the project, I thought we're not putting it through the project.
No, we don't wanna complicate things anymore and.
Cause we would have to go back to the agency and go through, um, the county's still getting, they're paying for it.
Yes.
And we're able to start immediately if we, if we're doing it as part of county work, so, um, we can go ahead and start with that.
We just, as soon as you, uh, your crews can tell us and notify the Commissioners, uh, uh, we'll bring the dose in and create what we have to.
Yes.
Okay.
So, so we'll, we'll go with the Commissioners to make sure that that's.
And that'll be in the, the side of precinct one, correct?
Yes, precinct one.
So if you need help, Commissioner, just reach out to us, we'll send our, our.
When we're ready, we're ready.
For like, uh, the dump trucks and stuff.
Same here, Coach.
Yeah, that was, um, it's just done, also reporting.
No, okay, no action. Item number twenty five is to authorize Premier Engineering to seek funding for wildfire grants.
Judge and Commissioners, on this one, I, I was, um, communicating with one of my colleagues from Zapata, and there is a grant that's available for, um, rural communities to fight wildfires and, and, uh, I guess last year we had a wildfire that burned up a lot of the land here in Zapata, and once they get going, it's really tough to put them out. So there's, there's some grant, uh, assistance program through USDA that. So there's, there's some grant, uh, assistance program through U S D A that, uh, allows for a planning phase to get, um, get a plan together, and then allows for funding for equipment, and, uh, that is for a total of ten million dollars. Um, being that we're, um, a low, remodeling community, we're going to request a waiver on any matching that would be required, and so we wouldn't have to match this project. Uh, we're just asking for permission if we can submit on behalf of the county.
What type of equipment are we talking about?
Uh, like, uh, those are, are, um, the, uh, the chipper's and, um, you know, motor grader, so that we can, there's eligible items that are within four brush clearing and things like that. So then, they're not, I think one of the items that was not, uh, eligible was like a, a water truck, because that's, I think they're considered items that we should already have, but items that we don't have to fight brush fires, those are the eligible.
Make brush trucks, then maybe we get, get some more equipment, Danny, I know.
And no matching, and no cost of the county impact.
Yes.
Mr. Morales, this brings up to me.
I know, yes, good, good deal, yes. Let her, so. I'd like to authorize Premier Engineering to seek funding, uh, for wildfire, uh.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Solis, seconded by Commissioner Gatsa. Any discussion, although the favor is the eye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
As we're talking about, branch real quick, have we, anything from that, uh, P C A element that we applied for the payment?
Yeah.
Initially, they had, uh, mentioned that it was gonna be approved in, like, January, and then it moved to February, now maybe it moved it to March. They haven't completely canceled it, but at, at first, they, they had mentioned that a lot of the, uh, P C A type funding was gonna be removed, and, by the new administration, so, but there, I think, they went back and they're reevaluating, so they may fund, maybe some of it, and they fund some of it. The judge mentioned earlier about there's some duplicate, uh, funding that we're looking at, some from the county for the water improvement.
Yes, I'm considering.
And some from that grant, that grant comes in, uh, I know we put some for the washing gross club, and for our water tanks, and, uh, there's the asbestos water line that we wanna replace, and some other, um, older, you know, uh.
I was listening to, uh, a report, uh, the Agriculture Commissioner Sid Miller, uh, and there's a big, uh, emphasis on this year's state legislative session to, uh, help rural counties, uh, where they're aging infrastructure as a way to conserve water. He basically said that the state is running out of water, which we, we know, are a fact, uh, we have a difficult time here. So there may be some funding opportunities, uh, for Zapata, to see what the state comes up, maybe to the Texas Water Development Board, or to, to replace some of our aging infrastructure, so they're, they're gonna make an emphasis on that, uh, we can certainly look into that. I'll, I'll, you know, I did reach out to Ryan, we'll see how.
That would.
I'll be maybe.
I'll come, there's thirty projects that may be for, for conserving water for Zapata that.
There's gonna be statewide, so there may be a significant amount of, of funds available to, especially rural communities, and, and he mentioned what he was saying, he was kinda talking to me, he was saying, there's, uh, especially rural counties that still have galvanex pipes, have asbestos line pipes, uh, and so, uh, yeah, and, and we're losing water, and we need to conserve water, so there's, hopefully, well, some of that, those funds will come our way.
Which ones are, now that we're talking about branch, were we able to squeeze into the safer streets and roads for all?
On the safer streets for?
Reterated streets, so the hope, uh, repaid streets that are deteriorated.
I need to look into that, old Commissioner, I know we, we, we did figure on that one, but the, that night when we looked at it, had, either had just passed or was gonna be coming up.
Yeah, that's on my sleeve, we're, we had about two weeks or something like that to do.
Yeah, I, I need to revisit on that one, I don't, I don't think, I don't have the way that that night, uh, for that one, but let me visit, uh, I'll revisit with you on that.
Thank you.
Alright.
Alright, thank you, Charles Alves.
Thank you, thank you.
We've got consent items, Commissioners, uh, twenty-seven, Premier Engineering.
Judge, uh, just, uh, on number twenty-seven, uh, from fund, uh, ten-six-six-five-four-two-six-one-no, communications and pajamas, uh, I think it's, uh, I think this general supplies.
With somebody in the records?
Just, just for the record.
Or wanting to go home and go to sleep. Uh, by Commissioner Solis, again, by Commissioner Morales, with that correction, uh, on item number twenty-seven, I'll, I'll, although the favor is the eye?
Aye.
Motion carries, we've got a resolution. Item number thirty-one is a resolution to approve an updated resolution for the operation body cameras. Thank you. Sheriff and, uh, proof is that yours, or?
Yes, which, I don't have a re, uh, I think.
You have it?
I have the resolution.
Okay, okay.
Uh, it's just to assign the sheriff, uh, from the previous.
Okay.
It's programs, not pajamas.
Program.
Thank you.
The rest is a program.
Was that only cousin?
It's, uh, I just wanted to make sure they're all alike. They just wanted to make sure that.
We'll blame it on skull check.
Yes. Yes.
The motion to approve, uh, any resolution, operation by camera.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Solis, seconded by Commissioner Morales, although the favor is the eye?
Aye.
And the motion to agree with the decision.
We have a motion by Commissioner Boyen, meant to executive session, they're second, second, seconded by Commissioner Solis. The items to be heard are, item number thirty-two is to interview applicants and select individuals for the position as Zapata County Airport Manager, and item number thirty-three, uh, to reduce salary of the electronic data process department, uh, slot number one, and these items will be heard under section five-five-one, going zero-seven-four, uh, personnel matters. We are now at executive.
Really good.
So, the next motion, return to regular session.
All seconded, no motion.
Motion, return to regular session, seconded by, uh, motion by Commissioner Lee, seconded by Commissioner, uh, Gotta. Uh, for the record, no action taken in this section. So, uh, item number twenty-six is to review the salary of the Electronic Data Processing Department, slot number one.
No action.
No action on, on twenty-six. Item number twenty-five is to enter the applicant and select individual for the position at Sapatagani Airport.
Judge, I make a motion to, uh, hire Domingo Castaneda as the next seconded airport manager.
Motion by Commissioner Solis, seconded by Commissioner Moya to, uh, hire Mr. Domingo Castaneda as our airport manager at a salary of thirty-six thousand dollars. Uh, any other discussion? I just wanna, uh, thank all the applicants for coming in. Uh, we appreciate, uh, them taking the time to, to, uh, to come in and apply for this position. And, uh, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Welcome.
The motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
By Commissioner Solis, seconded by Commissioner, uh, Gotta.
Thank you.
Detective State would be today.